Seven o'clock. As I spill my water, thank you, call this meeting to order. Can we stand for the roll call? Our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Do we have any visitor statements this evening? Seeing none, going to move on to any discussion items, FOIA requests? I don't believe we have any tonight, superintendent.
I don't believe there were any FOIA requests. Correct.
Any additional discussion items from Board of Education members for later in the meeting? No? No one? Okay. Moving on to presidents' reports, I'd like to welcome our new student representatives for the 22-23 school year, Paulina Carmona, excuse me, and Asia McKay. Thank you both for joining us. This is the first meeting that they will be in attendance. Mr. Van Horst and Ms. Gasko, who's not here this evening, have volunteered to mentor you in this process, and they will reach out and talk about the role of a student board member, which I'm sure you both are aware of from having interviewed so well last spring, but we are very happy to have you join us here for the school year.
Thank you.
Ladies, do you want to provide any background on yourselves, what you're going into your senior year, what you're involved in?
Hi, I'm Paulina. I am involved in math team. I'm in NHS, I'm in Girls Who Code, and yeah, I'm really just involved in the academics here at RB.
Current, current, future plans, I know they could change, but what are you thinking for like beyond high school?
I'm thinking civil engineering, and I'm not sure what college yet.
Great.
Hi, my name is Asia McKay. I'm involved in NHS, I'm the exec board, director of communications. I am a part of track and field. My specialty is high jump, and I am the girls swim and dive captain of this year. And for college, I'm thinking maybe University of Delaware to study kinesiology and maybe go into orthopedic physician and athletic training.
Incredible.
You're hired.
Thank you. Yes. Absolutely. Thank you both for joining us. Can we move on to the superintendent's report?
Superintendent's report, teachers' report Thursday, August 11th, not tomorrow, sorry, Kylie. Thursday, August 11th, the first day of school's attendance is Monday, August 15th. The principals' report tonight includes the general COVID-19 mitigations as well as some of the back-to-school information I added yesterday to the packet, so you can see the back-to-school information. Dr. Freitas will provide a little more detail in the principals' report following my report. Curriculum advisory, there's no new updates. Facilities advisory, we were notified today the state has approved our life safety amendment so much earlier than expected, and we will look to run that hearing possibly in September in line with our budget hearing. Dr. Smetan and I are still working out the details on that. Finance advisory council, as you can see, I submitted this report like Thursday of last week, and some things have changed. On Friday, we found out our evidence-based funding for this school year from the state of Illinois. So Dr. Smetan did update the budget and will provide a more detailed update to the Board of Education. No updates from personnel policy. There is a small packet included tonight for your approval. Again, we went through this. I sent one recommendation to both my advisory council, which is Ms. Towner and Ms. Ruska, and none of us thought there was warranted a full-blown advisory council meeting. So we're looking for the board to take some action tonight on that. I did not receive any questions on that either. Purchase, sale, or lease of land advisory council, no new updates. That includes my superintendent report through August 9, 2022.
Thank you, Dr. Skinkis. Dr. Smetan.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial reports for the month of July, so the first month of our new fiscal year, which represents 8% of our fiscal year. Beginning on Board Book Page 6, you'll see the total operating revenue for the month was $678,613, with 34% coming from federal and state grant reimbursements, 30% from CPPRT and property tax, but I'd probably say 99% of that was CPPRT, and then 27% for local revenue. The total operating expenditures for the month were $3,141,469, with 51% towards salary and benefits, and that percent is much lower this month, and operations and maintenance is much higher this month at 44%, primarily because in July, we pay the yearly cost of our Airmark purchase services, which is our operations and buildings and grounds and maintenance staff, and we receive a discount for paying a lump sum in July. On the next page, a summary of revenue shows that the district has received 2.32% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is similar to this time last year. On the next page, a summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 10.91% of the budgeted expenditures for the year. This amount is also tracking similar to last fiscal year. On the next book, Board Book Page 9, shows our balances, and this is something that we will be monitoring very closely this year, especially the first six months, along with the Township Treasurer, because the district will continue to have to deficit spend for at least the next six months due to the delay in property tax revenue. As I said, I'm going to continue to monitor the fund balances, because our current estimate is that we will need to complete an interfund loan from our working cash, both in the Ed Fund and in debt service fund, either at the last board meeting in October or the first and our only board meeting in November. So we'll continue to provide the board updates on that, but we definitely will have to complete an interfund loan from our working cash to cover not receiving our property taxes.
And that's if the debt service payments in December, correct? So we're just providing enough time.
Correct, but even if the property taxes come in in December, we have to pay that bill before we'll be able to receive that revenue. So at this point, we don't see a way around that.
Okay, and so we pay that in December as debt service. Let's say the property taxes are delayed, and we don't get them until the end of January or February, like worst-case scenario. We don't have any more debt service to pay in January, but we would still possibly do need more on the second loan from working cash to the Ed Fund, possibly?
Yes.
Okay.
And the way the interfund loan works is once we receive that money back from property tax, that money would go directly to working cash to offset the loan that we took from there. But like I said, both myself and the Township Treasurer will continue to monitor that on a monthly basis.
So can you repeat that again? The expectations, we'll have to do the loan in November?
Possibly at the COW in October.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll need a motion to move the money?
Yes.
But when we repay it, there's...
I don't believe we need a motion to, because the way it's set up is it automatically will refund the loan that we took from working cash.
Let's just verify from errors, is it errors that you think we would need to check on with this?
Sure, our auditor, legal counsel, or Township Treasurer, they all should know.
Okay.
Is what, the motion, non-motion?
Yeah. I think just to be safe.
We'll do the motion to be safe.
We definitely need to do the motion.
We know we need a motion in power. I think Mike's suggesting do the motion to be safe on the payback.
Well, if it's coming right back, she'll find out for us.
We have time.
Yeah.
Moving on, the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month of July from our board accounts are there. It doesn't compare budget to actual just yet. The updated budget has not been entered into our financial system. It will be later this month. The student activity account summary for the month of July has been included for the board's information as well. Keep in mind, negative numbers mean positive fund balances for student activity accounts. Next on Board Book Page 31 is the paid building rental report for fourth quarter of last fiscal year, so that is April 1st through June 30th, and this is just based off of what was paid during that quarter. So you can see the revenue is $26,738.75, primarily due to renting the field house was the biggest source of revenue. And then looking at year-to-date, the revenue was $91,604.68. Expenditures were $25,955, resulting in the surplus of $65,649.68, and that surplus is used to offset the maintenance of facilities, for example, when we had to repair some things in the pool or resurface the main gym floor, things of that nature. The surplus is significantly higher than the previous two fiscal years. The previous two years, we certainly took a hit from our rentals due to COVID, so the surplus that we received this year and the revenue that we received this year tracks to pre-COVID levels. So it seems as if rentals have returned to our normal rates. Next, I have the technology report, beginning on Board Book Page 34, so I'd like to invite Mike Connors, Technology Director, and Ms. Kylie Lindquist, Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction, to present to the board.
Ms. Lindquist?
Okay, I didn't even start talking.
Just saying, I'm just happy to make sure we're on our cues.
Harsh. So harsh.
Hello, it's been a couple of years since we've been together. Couple of things have happened in that time. To start off with the pandemic, for the pandemic, we had to purchase some cell phone, cellular hotspots for some of the students that didn't have access to Wi-Fi in their home. We also, in order for the teachers and the students to communicate via remote access, we purchased some Zoom license along with some Google Workspace for Education licenses, so it gave the teachers an ability to use either Google Meet or Zoom to communicate with the students in their class. For the classrooms themselves, we purchased the webcams, tripods, whole-room microphones. They're made available for teachers by request. We set them up, showed them how to use it, and at the end of the year, we picked those back up. So the lessons that we learned from the pandemic, from the IT department especially, was that we had to be very flexible. We went from in the fall of 2020 where nobody was allowed here, trying to figure out, you know, even though nobody's here for the student and the students aren't here, Chromebooks still break. So, you know, how do we take care of that? So we had to set up, you know, a form and create days where students can bring Chromebooks to the front of the building, either they were repaired on the spot or they were sent in to our repair service, and we had to, you know, also, when they come back from repair, notify the students that they were ready for pickup and stuff like that. So we went from that to in the summertime where we were back to preparing for regular school, and then in August, it changed to where social distancing changed, so we had to move around teacher desks and computers, and then it came to where the students weren't going to be in the classroom, so then a lot of the other, the webcams, tripods, and microphones became more important. So we really had to change very quickly in order to adapt so that everything would work out. Another thing too is the vendors that we had to deal with, we really had to make sure that stuff was in stock, was going to be delivered. I have to say, Amazon probably helped us out a ton. Prime is a great thing. So, and also, the pandemic really has changed how technology is used. If somebody wasn't, didn't know how to use Schoology before the pandemic, they probably are almost an expert now. They had to learn it. You can see that in the amount of tickets that are put in. Beforehand, there was a lot more questions. Now, the questions are much more complicated. And before the pandemic, the questions were kind of simple, and you know, how do we do simple? Now it's, I have this, and there's, you know, multiple parts, questions and stuff like that. So it really has changed how technology is used in the school. Another big thing was SOPA, the Student Online Personal Protection Act, that went into effect last year in July 1st, I should say. Basically, this is a protection for how our students' data is used with online vendors. Any vendor that we use that has, it's called PII, which is Personal Identifl, Identifl, I can't speak.
Identifiable.
Yes.
Information.
Information. We need to have what's called a data privacy agreement, and basically, in that agreement, it says what data is being taken, what they are doing with the data, how they delete the data. There are certain requirements under the app that says when things have to be deleted, and many times, these agreements, the vendor likes to modify them, and they have to go to our lawyers to make sure that they're within the laws that's allowable. So on our website, if you were to look up SOPA, and I also included the link there, it shows that we have about 100, over 160 software titles that are listed that show, most of them are ones that we have agreements with, some of the vendors refuse, so they're also listed there as non-approved. And we, what do you call it? We have, that's a constantly changing list with any kind of vendor that requires basically student information. So for the future, the SAT and college board exams are going to be going completely online within the next two years. As we speak, we're in the process of upgrading the infrastructure in the East Gym and the Field House to accommodate the amount of students that take those tests. It's been kind of, luckily, they've given us enough time because as with our upgrade that we're trying to do to Wi-Fi 6 inside the building, we're having a really hard time getting the access points in. The project originally I had planned to start during Christmas break of last year, but we cannot get anything in. I have an order in from October of last year that hasn't been fulfilled. We have another order in, and I don't know when those will be fulfilled, so, but that is in the future to upgrade to make sure that we're running a more advanced Wi-Fi. That's my report.
It was like flashback, talking about all that.
I know.
Before you begin, though, I think, Mike, the way you started your presentation, I'm like, it really, I mean, we usually do an annual report for the board, and it has been like three years since you've been here.
Yeah.
And I think on behalf of the board and myself and teachers, parents, students, I think, I just want to thank the IT department, because you guys really did weather that storm. I mean, we had the meeting with the union in December, we started in January with remote learning, and you got the 100 microphones and projectors and...
Technology was the background for all of it.
Yeah, and you pulled a lot of stuff off and...
And during all that, that SOPA stuff was a bear.
Yes.
And the state gave us very little direction, right? But they have a list as longer than my arm of all the things that kids, of kids' identifiable information without very much help, and then RB did it for free, which I know was an additional burden. Most districts paid about a $10,000 fee for an online platform that would do the majority of the sort of data housing and background work, and so I know that was a, because I was on the team that did it in my district, so I know that was a lot. So besides all the other stuff that was going on, you had to do that, so kudos. Yeah, that's great.
Well, thank you for that. You know, we had a lot of help too, you know, from other departments here, facilities especially. It was a total team effort between, you know, everybody involved in technology, including the AV department. We really didn't have much choice. We had to take care of it.
Well, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
On the instructional technology side of things, we have, normally, I wouldn't be the only one giving this part of the presentation. We've had a shift in our instructional technology. So for the upcoming school year, our coordinator will be Kevin Dibis, who is a member of our math department. He's been a member of our Blended Learning Pilot. He's served as our tech mentor. Really excited to have him joining that role. But I do want to go over the Bright Bites survey results from the survey that we gave last year. I'm not going to go blow-by-blow through this, because I gave it to you in your packet, but I do want to just hit some of the finer points. Again, Bright Bites aims at understanding the use of instructional technology in a school, and it breaks it down into four categories that you see in the beginning part of that infographic, Classroom Access Skills and Environment. So every school is given a case score for that acronym. We have been and remain to be in the advanced category in terms of our case score, and when you break down each of those components of the case score, you have individual scores within them. So our classroom score is proficient, our access is exemplary, our skills are advanced, and our environment is advanced. There was a question in the board packet about some of the comparison between our district and, for example, West Suburban Cook County. We also put a comparison in from Illinois and from the national sample there, which you can see on the next, after the second infographic. One of the things that I think is an interesting anomaly about last year, when you look at maybe some of the places where case scores dip, when kids came back to school last year, they were so beyond done looking at a computer screen, and so were their teachers. And so last year, we saw a lot of return to a student needing to take out a sheet of paper and take a pencil and engage in kind of a non-technology space. With us being less than 60 points off West Suburban Cook County for a school our size, I don't see any sort of red alarm flags going off for me at all. I think having an advanced score and being able to maintain that score for the number of years that we have had with the shifts in instructional technology coordinatorship, Kevin will be our third in three years, I think that we're holding really strong, and I feel really excited about that score still, especially post-pandemic, when I know for me, the last thing that I wanted to do was look at a screen anymore. I didn't want to read anything on a screen. I wanted a book, and I, students are nodding their heads, I wanted a book and I wanted a pen, and I wanted to kind of feel a little more anchored to the space that I was in than kind of living in this limbo of technology. So a lot of that dip, I think, is perhaps partially that. I think with Kevin taking over the instructional technology coordinator role, we're going to see a lot of growth in that area. Kevin is one of our teachers who was doing flipped classroom before everybody even kind of knew what flipped classroom was, and he was an outlier in his department who said, "I want to see if this works, and I'm going to do it, and I'm going to make all of these videos, and I'm going to spend the hundreds of hours that it takes to figure out how to teach differently so that kids can access learning differently in their classrooms." And I know there were a lot of naysayers when he started doing that, right? And we've talked about that, and some of the biggest people in his department who were kind of like, "What are you doing right now?", now have adopted that same sort of philosophy and that same sort of approach to teaching. So I'm really, really excited, especially in the area of the Blended Learning Pilot, to see where Kevin is going to be able to take us because of his experience, his connections in the building, and just his general expertise in that area. So I do think that as we transition into that role, we are going to have some of those discussions about how do we increase those case scores, because that's what Kevin's goals will be. So I will be able to speak to what are we going to do moving forward after Dr. Smetan and I are really able to sit with Kevin and start to develop those goals of where do we want to go from here. But I think the Bright Bites is always a nice reminder for our teachers and for our community that our students and staff have really internalized what it means to learn with technology as a resource and a facilitative tool, and they continue to do that. I think they stepped away from it maybe, like I said, after the pandemic, but I think this year will bring a lot of new excitement around instructional technology.
So, and this is also a free tool, so another...
From West 40, yes.
From West 40 pays for all the 41 districts.
Yes, for all of the participating districts.
41 districts.
And it's, I mean, the ease of use and like, I've never used an online survey tool that actually works and gets like...
And this one does.
Yeah.
It is really, the guts of it are really good.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, you own where you're at, you make a goal to get better, you've got tons of actionable data that Kevin, you and Kevin can use to plan, to make a goal to get better, right?
And Bright Bites has even kind of upped their connectivity to the school district, so we have a liaison with Bright Bites that Kevin and I will be able to start the school year, meeting with her, and seeing some drill-down information. The dashboard for Bright Bites is incredible and really does give you even more than you would see here, actionable steps to take to really increase our strengths in these areas.
Thank you. Just want to confirm, Doris, student reps, you have access to the board packet, correct? Okay, just wanted to make sure I was, that you were up to speed. Do you have any questions? Anyone here, questions?
The tests they're going to take in the two big spaces, you have to make sure the Wi-Fi, because they're going to connect during the test directly to the testing company, and how many kids in one room is that?
I don't know yet. Mark Helgeson is our testing coordinator. I don't know yet how they're gonna, like, what they're going to cap it at in terms of...
I thought I heard the number 350.
So I imagine then we'll split our junior class in half, is probably what I was...
So 350 kids in a room, all connected to the internet, all taking the...
That's why it needs to be upgraded.
And their stuff going back and forth?
Right.
We've also done some upgrades to our bandwidth, our broadband, and a couple of things, and that's why this project too is a little different than just the rest of the access points that are around in the school, you know, in the buildings. These are more, they're probably closer to what like the access points you kind of find like in the United Center and, you know, stuff like that.
Definitely mobile box.
Where they're a little more heavy-duty, and we have to do different wiring, and they're going to be up in the ceiling of, you know, in the rafters of the both gyms.
And currently, what is that, first test supposedly scheduled for?
I don't think it's scheduled to...
The 23-24 school year, I believe. So we have this school year with a paper and pencil, I see.
That's a heavy lift.
Right, guys in charge?
Yeah.
Pedal that bike a lot faster in the IT department.
I'll be honest with you, if they would have made it this year, I don't think there'd be too many schools that would have been able to comply, because unfortunately, there's, you know, worldwide chip shortage, you know, it's affecting everything from computer stuff to, you know, vehicles, you know, so...
I'll take you.
Will they be running practices this year? Will there be a chance for the school to run a practice on how to put that out as an electronic version?
I imagine there will, but we don't have information on what that looks like yet. Yeah. We will, Mark is one of the, he works for college board now, so he has the training of all of the resources and all of that stuff, so we get that information pretty quick, so we'll know as soon as we can.
Okay.
Any more questions from anyone, comments? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you, Kylie, you're sticking around for a few minutes. Thank you.
Dr. Freitas?
Good evening, our board members and Mrs. Superintendent. I'm going to begin by addressing a question that was submitted to me first about cell phones. I want to say almost all families and students receive our updated cellphone, electronics device cellphone policy for the 22-23 school year. Dan, I remember seeing you giving you one in Lorena as well. We also emailed this to all the families and updated it on our website. But in a nutshell, and I want to thank first and foremost the 15 teachers that helped craft this during the summer. We really started, you know, this school year right by working together even before the school year started. So a big shout-out to all the 15 teachers that helped craft our cellphone policy and to, of course, my office of student affairs team, Mr. Manis, Assistant Principal, and my two deans. But first and foremost, the students are going to have an opportunity to use their phones, right? I want to meet them in the middle. When the students are eating lunch, they can use it, it's their time. During passing period, they can use it, but before they walk into a classroom, the phone needs to be off and away, either in their school bag or in their locker. Teacher will also have a cupboard where students could put in their phones, an identifiable cupboard. With that said, we created a universal system of when to use the cellphone or not in class, because the tool's not bad, it's when is the purpose, right? The use of it. So we're going to, we have a color-coded system that's going to be visible to us students when they enter the classroom. If it's a red day, that means no phone should be on. If it's yellow, that means the students may use it the first five, 10 minutes, maybe to do like a brain engagement activity, a Kahoot or a short quiz. And if it's a green day, that means students will have the opportunity to use it throughout the day, throughout the lesson, maybe as a dictionary, as a voice recorder, right? This is a powerful tool. But again, I'm really proud that we finally have a universal system that we're all going to be following, and I believe it meets the students' needs and it meets all of our needs in the middle, right? There's some time to use it. There's some time to use it, but it's been built in. But there's also time to respect the educational space. Because one of the big challenges that all educators and administrators face today is the distractions of cell phones. I mean, any board meeting from Oregon to Florida, Maine to California, what are the top three issues? Cellphone and how do we teach in this space? So my staff and I, we came together and we created procedures to help address that challenge.
I want to thank you for doing that. I mean, last year, I'm sure anybody who was in the classroom really saw the classrooms being overtaken by phones. So thank you for being, taking such bold steps for the administration and everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Arsko. Going to my first item under teaching and learning, I want to congratulate all staff and all students for successful advancement during this past school year. Five hundred and sixty AP students took almost thirteen hundred AP exams. Four hundred and four students, or seventy-two percent of the total AP population, earned a mark of three or higher, which makes them eligible for college credit. But beyond passing, AP is about the journey. It's about the rigor. It's about students having gone through college-level material. And I know there was a handful that maybe didn't earn the mark, but they received college-level material, they were engaged, and you know what, they probably took their first three or four-hour exam, which gets them ready for college and professional examinations. You know, AP is an experience. It is great to earn a passing mark, but you being an AP scholar and AP student is a victory in itself. School cultures and operations, I'm sorry, before that, I'm going to go with. Okay, there was a question submitted to me about AP scores per subject area, okay? So Ms. Linguis, my Assistant Principal of Curriculum Instruction, is giving a report to all the board members that kind of highlights the passing rate of certain subject areas.
So here you have a five-year snapshot, pass rates by department, and then equity and excellence indication.
So I did this as a five-year snapshot so you could just kind of see, obviously, the COVID years are in there. So you're going to see some anomalies, of course. I broke it into three different tables. The score summary gives you kind of that high-level summary, like what Dr. Freitas just mentioned, just the number of students we have taking AP exams, how many exams we're taking, how many students got that passing score, three or higher. And then when you look at the middle, that was kind of the table that responds to the question that was submitted in the board packet. We don't report on subject tests, so I don't come to you and say, "Our passing rate for the AP US History Test is this." Because in certain subjects, when you do that, I'm essentially coming and I'm telling you the test scores of a teacher publicly and a small pocket of kids, depending on what the test. So that's why we've always clumped them into the content areas so you can see what the totality of that content area. And then the various tests fall into the content and feed into them. So I think that's where the meat of the question that was submitted by the Board of Education was. So when you look at English at seventy-six percent, what I'm saying is that there are two AP English tests. There's AP English Language and AP English Literature. And within those two classes, the percentage of students enrolled into taking the exam in those two classes, the pass rate three or higher was seventy-six percent of those students. So then the same is true then for the classes that feed into the Fine Arts and all the way down. When you look at the five-year snapshot, you are going to see interesting stuff happening in 2020 and interesting stuff happening in 2021. Twenty twenty is when they gave the AP exams online at home for students because that's when we were in the heart of the pandemic and they couldn't come into school, right? So you see some, you know, interesting, you have to have that in your brain when you're looking at those numbers, right? And then you see 2021, and that is when we were in the heart of the pandemic. So you have some students who are learning at home. You have some students who are coming into the building. You kind of have a mixed bag with what's going on. Teachers aren't necessarily able to hold students as accountable for practice testing, for skills. There's a lot going on in that year. This year, the 2022 reporting is really the return to AP as we know it. So kids are back in the classroom. They are taking exams in the school building. And so that really, even though last year was kind of our first year back from the rebound, you see the rebound in the year's scores. I was actually just talking to one of our math teachers who is an AP reader in, I think, Computer Science. And he was saying that, you know, looking globally as a reader at national scores, you are still seeing that dip nationally. And they talked as an AP team in College Board about really wondering, how long is it going to take until we kind of see it cresting up? We're not that far off, I don't think. We have kids that are getting the confidence back to return to AP classes and take that experience. I always remind the public, anyone who will listen when we talk about AP scores, that RB is completely open access. We do not have barriers to AP classes. We have always been a school, as Dr. Freitas said, that values the experience of an AP. As a former AP teacher myself, I can tell you that I had kids who worked an entire year and they got a two, and I could not have been more proud of that two if, you know, if I tried. So all of that kind of information feeds into what our AP scores look like. The very last chart is that equity and excellence number. So what percentage of graduating seniors earned a three or higher on at least one test at some point in their high school? Because when we're talking about opening access to all students and having an equitable program, we want to encourage students to at least give it that shot at some point during their high school year. Of course, our hope when they enter the AP track is that they stay there and they continue that experience, which typically we see when you look at those numbers of our AP students coming back up.
Kylie, I just want to reiterate, so you hear it from a board member, you know, and I'm only one of seven. But, you know, I was on the board when we first brought this in many, many years ago before any of them. And I do agree with you, and I am so appreciative that staff is willing to have open access. We've always believed that students have the opportunity to see what a college course looks like. And whether or not they did well in the AP course, it also invigorated how they handled their other courses to get ready for what a college course will look like. I've had four kids graduate. They were all over the board, from one to fives. And it didn't matter. I wanted them to have that experience. And so I'm going to reiterate what you just said and still support that vision. And thank you very much for doing that.
That's awesome. I appreciate you saying that, Lauren. Thank you.
So thank you for providing us. I think it's really helpful. And I'm, you know, personally encouraged by seeing the twenty-two rebound, right? That was, you know, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I think we're going to look back in five or 10 years and have some really interesting, like PhD studies to read.
There's a whole chapter in books about that, right? About those years, yeah.
But looking at RB and the universe where we are, you know, we're seeing a return to pre-pandemic participation. And participation is actually up, not to mention performance, so thank you.
And when I, you know, when you see every area growing, I want to note, because I think it's worth mentioning, the Fine Arts, when they show a dip, I think that's not an actual dip. We offer AP Music Theory every other year. So the year that they were very high, seventy-six percent, we had very high pass rates in AP Music Theory. And so I think that bolsters it. It's tough when you pull a class out. I don't want anybody to look at the Fine Arts and think that they were slacking off. They weren't at all. They did, they did very well.
Thank you, Ms. Linguis.
Nice job, Kylie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie.
Continuing on the principal's report on their COVID mitigations. So we're continuing our practices from the spring. Vaccinations are still being recommended, and students are encouraged to turn in their cards to the health office. Regardless of vaccination status, staff and students must stay home for five days if they test positive. Masking is still being recommended. We have plenty of COVID tests here. If anyone needs, if any staff member or student needs to be tested, we're still doing that. We're still moving with our preventative measures forward, and we still have the touchless handwashing stations, the bottle filling stations, the hand sanitizers. The building's maximizing the HVAC air exchanges with the UV filters. So all that's continuing. And then we will update, you know, our guidance based on anything that comes from the state Board of Education or any department of public health. So vaccines are encouraged. Positive COVID tests, you still stay now for five days. Maskings are recommended. We still have plenty of COVID testing, and we're still continuing with all of our preventative measures that kept us all safe throughout last year.
I just, Dr. Freitas, I just want to, when we were on the Facilities Advisory Council, our Mark is also doing a phenomenal work. I guess, Dr. Skengus, they're going to present that, what they're also doing with mitigation, I believe, with.
Correct. If you look at the preventative matters, obviously, we're doing the increased HVAC air changes, which we've been doing now for two years. But we also purchased, how many UV filters?
It's, there are UV lights, but no, a little over 20.
Over 20 that we're going to put in our large areas like cafeterias, especially the nurse's offices, especially the classroom. And these are also supposed to help kill airborne pathogens. So it's another initiative that we put in place, and they're being installed right now. So they should be hopefully ready to go the first week of school.
Yeah, so you can add that to the list because, I mean, you're really doing everything you can and really trying very hard to keep the school safe.
That's true. Next item, freshman orientation. It's tomorrow from 11:00 to 12:30 at the Canadian Athletic Complex Stadium. And for reasons it rains, we'll bring the students inside to the fieldhouse. Tomorrow as well, we also have family welcome night for sophomore, juniors, and seniors and transfers. That'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening. Institute days begin on this Thursday and Friday at 11:00 and 12:00. Soup begins next Monday sharp at 8:00 a.m. And then we have open house towards the end of the month on Wednesday, the 24th, at 6:30 p.m. Fall season has officially started. Monday was the first day of the fall sports season. So you're going to see a cross-country team, or football team, soccer, and tennis, and volleyball. You see them practicing. And in a week or two, game one, and when we start. And that concludes, Dr. Skengus, without a question, my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Thank you.
So this is the part of the agenda where we'd have a student advisor report. We're not going to put you on the spot, I don't think, tonight, unless you have something you'd like to bring to our attention. But normally, we would then turn to you and say, you know, ask you to comment on either agenda items or things happening in the building or happening more broadly. We're happy to get your feedback.
Okay, that's something the two of you can communicate on and work with Dr. Freitas so that once a month you have a student advisor report. Dr. Freitas will work more with you on that as we move forward.
And you can always go back to YouTube and look at what your predecessors have sort of said or done as well.
Do you have anything you need to share tonight for the opening of school or? Nope, okay.
Okay. Good luck next week.
Thank you.
Monday's coming very soon. Right?
Best and curious.
Yeah, consent calendar, I think we have approval of minutes.
Okay, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on July 12, 2022, opened and closed as presented in the August 9, 2022 Board Agenda Packet. Second, Mr.?
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Welch? Yeah, aye.
No objections, moving on. Old Business Action Items, Life Safety Items, Capital Improvement Sustainability. I don't believe we have anything.
No updates on that tonight. As you heard earlier, it was approved, and so we will be looking then to move that into, hopefully, the budget hearing.
And then we work with.
Liz Hennessy.
Liz to have the sale take place, okay. Tentative budget?
Tentative budget begins on Board Book Page 73. Since the Board received the tentative budget in July, the June 30th actuels, they were entered last time, but they were actually used to make changes to line items throughout the budget. The projected surplus has increased slightly since the last time. It's now at 521, 805. The significant changes were as follows. I decreased the revenue in the levy recapture because we had received an estimate from Cook County that our levy recapture, which is something new, would be around $130,000, and we received approximately $70,000 last fiscal year. I was anticipating not receiving it until the fall collection, but we did receive some of that earlier. So I decreased the revenue in that line item. I also decreased the revenue in operations and maintenance local revenue because I was anticipating our refund from our previous liability insurance cooperative to come in July, and it came in June. And so that accounted for the surplus in fiscal year '22. So I removed that amount from this fiscal year, and that was $140,000 in revenue that I had removed. But what I added in revenue is on Friday morning, the state released the amounts for evidence-based funding for fiscal year '23. For the first time, the district is classified as a Tier One district. That is the lowest classification. And what that means is that we'll receive more money from the state in tiered funding. So the additional amount of money that we'll be receiving is $390,016 in tiered funding that I was not anticipating. So I added that into the budget. Again, like I said, this is the first year that the district has been classified as Tier One. That's a moving target. So every year, the cut score or the cut percentage for tiers changes. And so we've always been very close. We've been a Tier Two school in the past. And we've always hovered somewhere around 70% to 73% adequacy. So what the state does is they look at the district's final resources, and then they divide it by an adequacy target that they calculate based on a lot of various factors. And they use the same adequacy target for all districts. And so they divide those two numbers to give each district a percentage. And then they use that percentage to rank all the schools, and they assign you a tier. So like I said, the benefit of being a Tier One school is that we do receive additional tiered funding.
So I mean, essentially, the budget surplus is at 521, but we just received almost $400,000 on Friday.
Right, but that's included in the 521.
Correct. So what I'm saying, though, is that's 85, 90% of what is causing that surplus.
Correct.
Money that we didn't know we were getting until Friday.
Correct. And then I did make small adjustments to various expenditure accounts that arose since entering June 30th actuels and having the time to look at that and to finalize staffing and things of that nature. I will say the two outstanding, big items that could impact the surplus one way or another that you'll see the final draft in September is I have a meeting at the end of the month with Ladsy, our Special Ed Cooperative, and a Director of Special Education to finalize not only the expenses in regards to out-of-district tuition for outplace students, but also as well as reimbursements from the state for room and board and things of that nature. So that could be adjusted a little bit one way or another. And then also as well, the state has not released the CPPRT estimate. As you may remember, last year, we budgeted what the state had released as the estimate, and then we received more than double that amount. So I'm hoping to have that before the September board meeting as well. There's no action needed tonight. This is just an update. We will approve the final budget. I'll ask the Board to approve the final budget at the September business meeting. The public hearing has already been taken care of as well.
So we've got three items that might change. And next meeting, we're going to approve the budget.
Correct.
Thank you for all that hard work. Thank you for all that hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any more questions on the budget update?
Just because we got approval of that life safety, Senator, does that impact?
Does not.
Okay.
Because we would probably use life safety bonds to pay for that. Press plus?
Shall I read the motion?
No, there's no motion.
There's no motion on the budget. So press plus, we're looking for an update.
Press plus, just a brief update. The changes or additions are highlighted in green, deletions are highlighted in pink. The CBA was reviewed, and the only policy that was adjusted was 5.200, because we have established lunch language in our contract. Otherwise, it was mostly just a header change to please refer to the most recent collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, I just looked at like some cleanup that needed to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The Board of Ed, ready?
Any comments from anyone, questions, discussion? Please move forward.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the press plus policy update, CBA review, as presented in the August 9, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
Aye.
Mr. Welch is clarifying that was in favor. You were in favor of that?
Yes, I was just not as fast as the others.
Okay. So moved. Thank you. Security camera system, do we have an update? This is a second read on this matter.
Dr. Smetia?
Correct. I believe the questions submitted last time were addressed in Dr. Skeng's Friday update. So I don't believe there were any questions submitted since then. But our current security system is very out of date and needs to be updated. It's currently functional and running, but it's running on analog majority of the cameras. And so we want to replace them with a cloud-based system so that we can get rid of the server. And then there, there's a lot of new features as well. As outlined, we are recommending that we go with Skynet Security. We've used them for several projects in the past, and they've done a great job for us. They also are the lowest price.
Were there any questions here this evening from anyone? I think we can move forward.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the purchase of a security camera system through Skynet Security as presented in the August 9, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Welch. Give a roll call, please, Ms. Hardy.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. New business payment of bills.
There were no questions submitted tonight regarding payment of bills.
Anyone here on the floor? Can we move forward, please?
Okay. Payment of bills. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the August 9, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Welch. Give a roll call.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
And Ms. Saeilis.
Yes. The next item is pretty standard as well, the activity count for the class of 2026.
Woo-hoo.
This is an annual request for each new incoming freshman class. We requested in August so that the freshman class can begin holding their quizzes. And so in order to manage these, we need an activity fund for this class.
Can we get a motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the activity account for the class of 2026 as presented in the August 9, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. It is financial, so we should do a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Saeilis and Ms. Turek.
Motion carries, though. We're 5-0, correct?
Five, yeah.
Moving on to the TRS Supplemental Savings Plan.
TRS Supplemental Savings Plan. Remember, this was a requirement that came out back in February '23 of 2021. TRS had passed, had gotten legislation passed that school districts needed to offer an agreement with TRS to run a 403B for employees or 457 in some government agencies, but more or less it's like a 401K. And so there was a lot of going back and forth between school districts and legal departments on responsibility and terms within the agreement. And tonight, that has all been finalized, and our attorney is recommending approval. Is recommended, but this is a first read. So it does need to be approved by September, correct, Kristin?
It needs to be approved by September 30th. We did list it as a first read, but the Board may remember that we've been providing a few updates since February 2021. But there's no rush. We can approve it at the next board meeting.
And this is a plan that we don't contribute to, only the employees do?
Correct. It has to be offered to all employees.
And the attorney has, has approved this to go forward?
Correct. And the attorney submitted us the resolution. So it's up to the Board.
Does anyone feel we should wait till the first meeting in September approximately to do this?
Do we pay to manage it, though?
No, we, no.
TRS.
TRS pays to manage it.
So we don't have any management cost? Because we're like the third, we're, I mean, we're like that intermediate, you know?
No, TRS pays for a company, they're using a company called Voya. And TRS is paying Voya to manage that. We need to, you know, manage, making sure which employees sign up and things of that nature. But that's no different than what we're already doing, and there's no cost associated with that.
Okay.
So whatever, whatever the employees sign up to contribute, the Office has to withhold it, make the payment into the plan?
I just want to make sure we weren't the bookkeepers like we have been in the past.
No cost to the district.
Well, we, we keep track of how much they've elected to pay in, and then we pay it over. So.
It's no different than what we're doing with other 403Bs.
Which is already.
It's already happening.
This, this came about because a lot of other schools don't, well, because they're required to, but also a lot of other schools don't already offer 457B plans. We already do, so I don't anticipate a lot of our faculty, you know, interested in signing up. But we are required to offer this option for teachers.
Okay.
Does anyone feel the need to wait till the next meeting, or?
No.
I'm indifferent. No?
Well, I'll read the motion, and then you can vote your conscience, okay?
I mean, I'm indifferent about waiting till the next meeting.
Oh, you, you know.
Because this is supposed to be a first read, but if we feel we could take care of business tonight?
Everybody good? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think we've heard about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, read the motion.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, adopts the resolution entitled, "Resolution Approving TRS SSP Employer Participation Agreement as Presented in the Agenda Packet for the August 9, 2022 Board of Education Meeting."
Second.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
A yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
And Ms. Saeilis.
Okay, next on the agenda is, where are we?
Visitor statements?
Visitor statements? No? Discussion items requested there were non-consideration of items for future meetings. Anybody have any over here on my right?
Negative.
Okay. Matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. And the motion is, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters the closed session for the purpose of considering closed session matters as presented in the August 9, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Mike Welch.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Saeilis and Ms. Turek.
Okay.